You got some more? The approach?
It's greased, it's greased, but the yellow.
Is there one more?
Yeah, well, that's.
Maybe a thicker line.
Yeah.
Let's not talk about how many years ago that was.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome all to the first regularly scheduled planning board meeting in two twenty twenty, the new decade. What we'll need to do first this morning is reorganize our board. Jay, if you could take the stand for a minute and...
Okay, I'll accept the motion to appoint Fred Reckel to another one-year term as planning board chairman. Of course contingent on him being appointed to the board by the town board at some time in the future. And I have a motion by Rich, seconded by Rose. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. And on that note, I'd like to propose a motion to entertain a motion to appoint, for us to appoint Jay Beaumont as our vice chair for the upcoming year. Motion by John, seconded by Rich. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then what we'd like to do is, board would like to appoint Rich Hoyt, attorney. Bonnie Franzen as our planner. Andrew Featherston and Mazur Consulting as our engineer. Karen Arant as our landscape architect. And Bill Kelly as our lighting consultant for year twenty twenty. Now, a motion to appoint those five people by Rich, seconded by Rose. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I believe last would be to appoint Sue Haddon as our secretary. And our better half, so to speak, and Judy Caston as our stenographer for the year twenty twenty. Motion by Rose, seconded by Rich. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Board. Next, as we normal, as we do, we have time set aside for a comment section. Are there many comments aside than the ones, than what we have on the agenda? Many people want to comment on? Is Donnie maybe? Okay, and Barbara? Okay. Okay, Don, yep?
Hello, everyone. I just want to basically comment on what you guys just did with the appointments. I'm not sure the protocol is just a question. It was my understanding that at the reorganizational meeting coming up on the twenty-fourth by the town supervisor, he's the person that makes the appointments or suggests appointments, or however the procedure is. I was not of the understanding that you guys could just do what you just did.
We appoint our consultants. That's our task, not the town board's task to appoint consultants. We have, Bill Kelly has retired, as has Leslie Dotson.
Fred, I'm not referring to your consultants or anything. I'm referring to the board.
Board members, okay. What happens with the board members until we're replaced, we serve in our positions.
Okay, because I was just, the timeline wasn't, was a little bit foggy when you did that, because I was having an impression.
Two years, I think it was, took five months, two years ago, it took five months to get two new board members. So we function with five under seven-person board.
As I said, I'm not judging, I'm just asking a question on protocol.
All right, very good. Thanks. Yes, Beverly. Hi.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I sent, Beverly Mertz, go ahead, tell my time. I sent you all a letter, an email regarding the IDA appointment, the IDA application.
Application, yes.
Okay. I was just, for the record, I'm hoping that it's within your authority to be able to enforce the findings of your finding statement.
Yes, go ahead.
Against selfish.
We received your letter. I didn't know anything about what had transpired with the IDA. So we looked it over and we asked the applicant to clarify. Bottom line is, our conditions have not changed one bit. The paper house will be restored, and the wastewater plant will be offered to the town. The town will accept it or not at its discretion whenever. So those two things, regardless of what the IDA application says. I think, and I'll speculate, the confusion is, when they originally applied, this board hadn't made its ruling yet, and when they reapplied to change the name, I don't think they updated the information.
They never changed it.
I think that's.
They just copied the information and correct.
So you can rest assured, first of all, the IDA will not be able to change something this board did, and this board is not changing what it did.
Okay. Now, does that, does that go to every point of your finding statement?
I would think.
Okay. We have that on record, that at every point of your finding statement, they're going to be held to?
Unless they come back in in a public setting and request relief from that, which I have no idea that they're going to give. But that's the findings unless it's changed, and we have no, we would hope that after all the time we spent, there wouldn't be any requests to change. But only this board can change what it did.
Okay. And this board has the authority to make sure that if they are being enforced by oversight somehow?
Well, that gets into, this board isn't really the police.
Okay.
The building department is really the.
But do you, do you have the authority to withhold a building permit?
We don't issue the building permits.
But do, is the suggestion to be withheld?
Well, I mean, the board can suggest something it thinks is in the best interest of the town. What won't happen is the chair will not sign the site plan until all the conditions required before he signs have been met. Once that happens, the billing permit is the billing department.
All right. I'm just really nervous about this because, you know, it's fishy. Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, Randy.
I just want to echo what Beth said, that the first thing you said was that you were unaware of what happened at the IDA. So how are we supposed to have any faith that still, given the circumstances, the boards are not communicating, and we're unaware of something so major to the residents that's happening, and they're saying they're going to tear this building down, they're not going to do this? If you're still unaware of what's going on at another board meeting, how can we have any faith that you're going to enforce anything?
I don't believe it's up to this board to have to check every other board that an applicant appears in front of.
That's what every board says. That's what every board is saying.
Well, I'm sorry, we are very busy, as everyone in the room knows.
So are we, but we're all here.
Okay. I don't believe it's my client's obligation to periodically check in two weeks, four weeks, six months. We'll rely on Mrs. Mertz and everyone else in the room to tell us what we don't know.
So I'm going to ask the same question I asked when I came in here seven months ago. I asked Rod Winchell, and Rod Winchell lied to me about it. If this starts to go on, and everything moves ahead, and you do your diligence, and you sign your paperwork, and the building permit gets passed, and then they knock down the house, and don't you, and then we're already fighting against the tide because they've already knocked it down. They're going to try to save it. Who are we appealing to? Who does have the final say? Who has the power to hold this up until they check everything and dot all the i's and cross all the j's? Who's the, where does the buck stop?
I would say, I would say the building department, because no C O should be issued if approvals weren't followed.
So he needs to look at all of your approvals, all the site plans, all the pilot stuff from the IDA, whether they get the pilot, don't get the pilot, whatever. But all of those plans, combine them all, look at them, and then issue a permit.
Yeah, I won't speak for him on IDA, but he definitely has to review the finding statement, and then the site plan the chair would sign. Because that's the roadmap for the approval.
And will all of the paperwork from the IDA, whether they get a pilot or don't get a pilot, be given to you? When you're reviewing all that?
We don't review the pilot issue.
Right. So the building inspector and whoever's issuing the permit are going by your site approval and your paperwork and your approvals, and the IDA thing is separate, but their paperwork, am I wrong, right? The IDA paperwork that they had is something completely different than what the paperwork here is, right? Okay. So if he's never looking at that paperwork, and you didn't know about that paperwork, what's to stop them from doing whatever that paperwork says?
The IDA, in my view, can't issue building permits, isn't responsible for C O's or monitoring, their focus is very narrow.
But there's a whole packet of information that says something completely different than the information that you have.
I thought I explained before, but I'll say it again. For whatever reason, they didn't update their second application, which caused this whole problem. And they have explained it, excuse me, they have explained it now in a letter dated today to Jeff Christ of the IDA, which is a public letter. And explains exactly what I said.
That they were mistaken, and that they understand that this is what they're being held accountable for.
Or findings.
Both issues were addressed head-on in the letter. The house will be restored, per shippo, by the way. That was the state, was very adamant, it wasn't just the town.
Okay.
And, and the wastewater treatment plant for months now has been offered to the town. And if the town board doesn't want it, they'll never have a responsibility for it.
Okay. So regarding that specific concern, you should address a letter to the building inspector, just making sure that the building inspector is aware of the.
Whatever you think's best for the town.
Okay.
Can I just make one more second? The way I see it, the problem with, and I know, you know, you guys aren't IDA, I get it. But the IDA are making decisions based on wrong information. They don't have the authority to say that we're going to take over the waste treatment plant. But that's part of the application, and that's what they're saying, that's part of their approval. See, there's a problem here.
And the findings, Jay.
I don't think the IDA can, has any ability to weigh in on planning issues. I don't know if they did. I hear that the applicant sent a letter, and Mrs. Mertz correctly commented. But I don't know that I've heard the IDA start telling this board that its conditions are wrong, or they have to be changed. I don't think it's got that power, nor do I think that's their intent.
Yes, Karina. Your last comment.
Karina Tipton, Village of Montgomery. And now for something completely different. I just, I think you all know that there's a special town meeting tomorrow to discuss the comprehensive plan in the moratorium. And I just wanted to ask this board to consider the effects of your actions tonight. As the town is considering a comprehensive plan and a moratorium, potentially on decisions that you could be making tonight. And I just would like to ask you to keep that in mind as you're, as you're working through the process. And I also wanted to say that I appreciate having the aerial imagery up on Google Maps, and I wanted to ask if it was possible to show a scale. I'm not sure if that's something that's easy to click on or off, so we can estimate the distances. That was just my second request. So think about the moratorium as you do your things. Is there a scale button? Thank you.
A lot of times it says the scale, but it's going to be so hard to read.
Yeah, this one doesn't. Doesn't have it on there. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to turn on a scale?
You can actually measure in Google Earth, if there's a specific house you want to measure from a building corner or something.
Yes, Mr. Mertz, this will be our last comment before we get into that rapid hearing.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Then before you, with a map of the projects that had been on file for you, for you guys pending approval, and asking for a cumulative traffic study before any more approvals get done, because we as residents are going to be impacted by the increased truck traffic, but also the increased workers who are going through all these, all these projects. So you ask, I ask, and on behalf, and I'm not sure if everybody's going to agree or not, a cumulative traffic study before any project is stamped, looked into, or anything else, as is to see the effects of what's going to happen to the school districts, the local businesses, of being overrun by trucks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Our first public hearing tonight is on National Builders LP, Von Lompe Trucking Corp., 134 Neely Town Road Warehouse. It's an S U permit site plan. This is initial opening of a public hearing. Gentlemen, who's going to, Charles Buzidlow, the attorney representing the developer? How are you doing? You can explain it for us?
I'll do a little explaining, and we'll have to argue some more.
Okay, great, thank you.
Very good. As the chairman said, my name's Charlie Buzidlow. I'm outside counsel for National Builders LP, the applicant. We're here for a public hearing on our proposed development. It's a three hundred twelve thousand, five hundred square foot warehouse and office building, to be located on Neely Town Road. It's, the address is 134 Neely Town, but just as a point of reference, this is a lot that was previously created by a subdivision of what you would all know as a Storage Town facility. And as I said, we're here for a public hearing on the site plan, such as use permit. We have identified a end user for the building, which is always helpful to be able to know exactly what's going to go on. That's going to be a due pile. It is going to be the end user of the building once it's constructed. And they will use it for a slight difference from their normal trucking operation. This is going to be a more of a facility where product will come in, they'll receive orders, and then ship those orders out to various local stores and meaty up facilities, so just in a general sense. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave Young from Chasin, and Dave can just go into a brief discussion, a little more detail about the project, so that people can understand what we're looking for.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Hi, Dave.
Can you pop up the site plan here? It's a display on. As you can see, the site is sandwiched between Penske and between X P L and behind Storage Town. It's in an area that's zoned, interchange, commercial, and industry I D. The building's stated as three hundred twelve thousand, five hundred square feet. There will be a fence around the entire facility with a gate for security purposes at the entrance drive coming into the site. There we go. So the entire facility will be fenced off for security purposes. On the south side, you'll see that there's a D E C wetland in the south middle, as well as the southeast portions of the site. There's a one hundred-foot adjacent area is what it's called, that we cannot go into without having a permit from D E C. With the layout that we've completed here, we have avoided that entirely, so that the wetlands are protected down at the south and the southeast. The stormwater management for the site, you'll see around various ponds, we're proposing a number of bio-retention areas, as well as some infiltration areas, to take care of all the stormwater on the site. The trucking portion of the site, the loading dock, and the truck parking, and the truck drives, all are considered a hotspot by D E C. So before they go to any stormwater facility, they have to be, they have to be treated. They actually have to be treated twice before they go to any facility, and are discharged off of the site. The entire stormwater management for the site has been balanced, so that the pre-development flow rate going off the site is more than what the post-development flow rate is going off the site. The utilities for the site, there is a water line along the southern property line that will be connected onto. You see the, yeah, right there, straight up. There's a water main connection that'll be happening there with a meter pit down at the property line, and then a eight-inch line coming up into the site, circling the building and connecting into the building. As anticipated, there will be a fire pump inside the building, which will feed the sprinkler system within the facility. Sanitary sewer will go right along the entrance drive by gravity. We've dropped the entrance drive down a little bit, so we no longer need a pump station. So we will go by gravity right out to Neely Town Road, and connect it to the existing gravity force, I'm sorry, gravity main that is located along Neely Town Road. Electric and gas also are right along Neely Town Road, and similarly, will come up right along the entrance drive up to the building, and connecting up there. The access to Neely Town Road requires a Orange County Department of Public Works driveway permit. That permit has been submitted to them a number of times, and we have a set of comments that have been received back, and we're going to be addressing those here in the next couple of days. The only major comments that came in were that the, the catch basin near the access drive to Storage Town was buried below about eighteen inches of earth. So we had to excavate that out, a couple of weeks ago here, when we did our survey, and we found that pipe where it's located, and traced it across the road to the T A truck stop, and to its ultimate discharge on the north side of the T A truck stop entrance drive. So we're currently in the process of doing an analysis on that piping, make sure there's no problems. But as I said earlier, our discharge rate is going to be lower than what the existing rate to that pipe is going to be, so there shouldn't be any problems there. You look like you have a question, or?
No, no.
And the other thing that Dave questioned was the site distance to the right. So while we were out there with the survey group, we had them set up at the exact location of where the driveway was going to be, at the elevation, as per ASHDO standards, and took our shot to the north, and made sure that we had appropriate distance there for turning. They're concerned about trucks turning left out of the site, so there's enough distance so they can see if somebody's come around there. We had originally done the study at forty miles an hour, which is posted at, and then our, our traffic study indicated that the speed was actually around forty-seven miles per hour. We met that easily, but Ocean, I'm sorry, Orange County said you have to do it fifty-five miles an hour, which we were a little bit shy. So we had to go out and physically measure to make sure everything was okay there. We have finally contacted the fire department, and hopefully you have some other information. He was going to give you a call and talk to you, Fred. And so it looks like, okay.
This is Maybrook, right?
Yes, this is Maybrook. Patrick? Okay. I sat down with him last Wednesday when I was here for the workshop, and he said he was going to get in touch with you. I FedExed the plans to him the following day, or the same day, so that he would get them the following day. And then he said he would sit down with one of his people, and then he'd be in touch with you.
Yeah, maybe he's going to sit down first and then.
Yeah. So he didn't see any issues with the layout. He did ask for a Knox box at the entrance, of course, and a pass key to the building, and that's, of course, something that the owner of the building will have to provide. The lighting plan has been submitted to Bill Kelly. Haven't heard anything back from him. That was submitted to him just before Christmas. So obviously, it's a revamp of the entire site, so I'm not sure exactly when he'll get that back to you. And the other thing we were waiting on was landscaping, and I assume we haven't heard anything on this site. So those are the things that we were waiting on. And I think that's, that's pretty much it. We did a traffic study, as I said. The Orange County DPW did ask us to update that, including Medline in that study, even though that was approved after we had already been into them. But they asked us to do that, and we're in the process of doing that.
Okay.
So that's pretty much where we are.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is an opening of a, this is a public hearing, so we'll, we'll open up the floor for public comments and questions, and please just identify yourself for the record, if anyone has any questions or concerns about the project. Yep, okay. Blaine?
Blaine Hetzel, Maybrook, Conquill Lane. I looked at a map today. I'd like to see that map again, if I could. Right here, we're showing two wetlands. That property has four wetlands. Prior to night, the late seventies. Prior to the late seventies. When McLean's trucking came in, there was six wetlands in there.
Okay.
McLean was able to fill in one of the wetlands.
Okay.
Half of that water used to run down behind the state garage and come across. Now it's trapped. It must come our way. On that map, this wetland that I could, got pictures of, is not even on the map. It's not on that map. So I'd like to look at, I'd like to show you on that map.
Yeah. Am I in the way?
Yeah.
I got a glare, I can't. This, this is over here.
Here.
Okay.
Don't tell me it don't exist, because here it is. Okay? This is right here.
Okay.
It runs, it comes out of their property, runs into this property, fills up, runs into this property, this property, to the brook.
Okay.
And come back down and around.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
This is this. This is this.
Thirty-five, that's a high one.
Okay. I see we have lived on this property for eighty-four years. I have lived on this property for sixty-four years. And I find that nobody has ever come to my house and asked what goes on here. And the problem that, that we have here now is caused by things troubling. Wetlands, wetlands, which put all the water.
Which, which is what?
Kind of buffer.
Oh, no?
No. No, I'm here, this is my son's. We're all Conquilles. We all, this is the family.
Standing family.
Yeah. Okay? There's another one?
Yeah.
Another one. All the same piece. Don't tell me it don't exist. It exists. This is the only thing that's saving us. When this reaches a certain height, it starts to slow back down, and it goes in, there's a big, there's a big wetlands down here also. This stream is filling it back down into that wetland. Then it comes across, a lot of our driveway. Here is a lot of our driveway. Okay? And fifty yards away is a sewer plant.
Sewer plant, yeah.
Okay? So I don't want this water on my property. So, I don't want this water on my property.
Of course.
And I also don't want their lights. Why is there no buffer built between industrial and residential?
There, there is.
I don't see it.
There's a three-hundred-foot strip. You can't park three-hundred feet within.
I want woods. I want, I don't want to be able to see and I don't want to be able to hear.
Yeah, um, where's the? See this area in here, they're not doing anything. This is the edge of what they're doing.
What is, that was a hundred foot last one. There's the trees, there's the trees in here.
There's the three-hundred-foot buffer right here. One hundred feet of tree, right here.
This is probably, this is probably at least a buck and a half, one-eighty in here. Here.
This is this.
Yeah, there's that wooded area where it floods.
This is this.
Yeah.
No good. How can you do? I wanted to build my house on this property. I was told it was too wet for me to build. Now these guys have built.
Well, the buildings right up here, here's three-hundred feet from the boundaries, right here.
What's, what's this right here?
That's the edges what they're clearing. They're going to go in here. So, it's about a hundred and eighty feet from the boundary. Yeah. So, it's probably just the other side of that maybe that, it's hard to tell, distance.
It's not even, it's not even. It doesn't exist.
The edges?
This isn't considered wetlands. Why isn't here?
You had this delineated, correct?
We delineated, yeah. We located these as well as the four of them, there's wetlands.
It must be an area where the water backs up and it, and it dams.
It's the same as this and it's the same as this.
It's a little lower.
And there's another one here that they're building.
And the government.
Yeah, they've got a requirement for that.
Hey Fred, I will gladly show you.
It's, um, the property lines aren't perfect on this.
Okay.
But here's the big state. This one here, that's the area that's speaking about. But it's right here showing you.
Yeah, and I think what happens is that, you know, the water crosses over the boundary.
Right.
You know, and it gets, because it's low in here. Four-thirty-three or thirty-two. So, this is all low in here and then it, then it steps up a little bit by the topo and it's, and it goes back down, right? There's a hump here. Do you have this shown on your map, Blaine?
This is right here.
Oh, what you're showing us is right in this corner. Yeah, okay. Yeah, they're not touching it.
It's not even right on this map. Why isn't this wetland on this map? Just taking wetlands?
I don't delineate wetlands.
Yeah, there's certain, there's certain criteria for delineating a wetland. This is probably, more than likely, this is an area that the water backs up and it floods here when you get a lot of rain, right? Yeah. But this is a stream.
This is much larger than that.
What, it's in here, okay, Blaine? Does it, by top, to progress here? Yeah, okay.
Comes all the way through and hooks up to this brook.
Okay.
And follows back now.
Okay. So, it's, it's probably just on edge of your property? Or the family property? Yeah. Okay. That's what I'm looking at here, this area.
Right here, yep.
Okay.
I gladly show whoever wants to look.
I'd love to see them zoom in on the fireplace.
Up in that area there.
Yeah.
There used to be six.
Yeah.
Now according to this, there's three. And the problem after when McLean's trucking came in, now all the water comes to the board Maybrook.
And then across the street from me.
Not toward the highway garage, the, the state garage.
You're, you're not directing any of your, any, any outflow from any rain this way at all?
No.
It's all going out.
All going down to here.
Okay.
So, either here or here.
And it's not going out any faster rate than what it goes now?
We were actually intercepting some, it's actually going off that way. Not a large amount, but we're intercepting some.
Okay. Could you look at that, Dave, and just, this corner, have the guys look at it?
I'd rather have his owners here look that up. The development.
If I get a chance, I'll get up, I'll go up and look up here. All right. Okay, thanks.
Anyone blasting on that property?
Uh, if needed, yes.
There's going to be blasting on that property also.
If, if it's, if it's needed and you don't?
We don't, we don't know exactly how much, um, how deep the rock is that's ripable. And we're hoping not to have to. But it is possible.
There, there are protocols you have to follow if you do, correct?
Yes, and those are listed on our plans in the general notes in the beginning.
Okay. Yeah, anything else, Blaine? The water, and we'll look into that. Okay?
Has a town engineer looked at this?
The property. Has the town engineer walked the property? Know what we're talking about?
I don't believe, I, not to my knowledge. We usually have a couple of members go out. Was there a couple of members went out looking?
I went out and Bill, he went.
Okay.
And this was more than a year ago.
Quite a while ago.
I can go out again.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look into that corner. We'll definitely see what's going on. I may do it myself.
I'm five Conklin Lane and feel free to knock up my door.
All right. All right.
Or I'm six Conklin.
Five and six.
Anyone else want any comments on, uh, uh, one-thirty-four? Yes, Karina?
Uh, Karina Sipson. Um, this site strikes me that it has a lot of similarities with the warehouses that are in front of this board on Seventeen K and Bracken Road. Namely, it's an industrial. We're going to do karaoke next. Okay, thanks, Doug. It's not unusual? Okay, sorry. I'll start over. This, um, this property strikes me that it has a lot of similarities with the warehouses that are before this board on the corner of Seventeen K and Bracken Road, which is to say that, um, these are warehouses that are, are, are backing up right up against the residential area. And one of the reasons why I was hoping we could get a scale on there so we could see how not just, uh, Mr. Conklin's property, but also the houses that are more to the south are between five hundred and a thousand feet away from this property. They're very, very close. And because of that, I wanted to ask if the planning board or if the applicant have considered hours of operation. Um, I think the landscaping is going to be very important on the backside of the property and, and really, Mr. Kelly is a superstar in planning. I think he's going to do a great job. I would hesitate to ever second-guess him. But what I'm really super concerned about is noise in particular. Um, Maybrook, especially this part of Maybrook with yellow freight right across two-oh-eight, they already have a lot of noise. Um, and it, it would be a real shame for the town of Montgomery to cite something without sufficient noise protection on, on the Neely Town side of the people that live there right now and essentially pin them in on both sides with, with the noise from, from trucking operations. And I know that with the wetlands in that area, um, it can be tricky to build something like a traditional noise barrier that might involve a berm or something like that, but I'm certain that there are technologies available that could help protect the residents who are just behind this property. I do know people who live in that neighborhood and they have commented that they are already, the noise is already at nuisance levels, um, that, from the existing operations that are around them. Not everybody is as comfortable standing up in public meetings as I am, so I'll ask them to write you letters. So, thank you.
Thank you.
They've told us that their hours of operation are between eight AM to four PM.
Is that correct, Dave?
Generically speaking, yeah, we're, it's a one-shift operation that we're planning. Uh, I believe we also spoke at the, the work session that there could be an occasional, you know, second shift depending on customer needs or a Saturday during the morning or occasionally, just to get product in or out of the way.
My name's Tom Lefae, Three Conklin Lane. I've only been there about twenty years, so I don't have their time. But, I mean, I don't know if everyone knows, the little green pine trees down there, that's Conklin Lane. Uh, I'm colored line, so the little blue circles are your stormwater?
Yes.
So, you're putting more water back, you're, you're going to store water right, pretty much on our border, pretty much. I mean, yeah, it's a hundred feet away. I'm in the middle of Conklin Lane. If the water hits Conklin Lane, it comes in my house.
It absolutely does. Just not discharging that direction.
That's what everyone says. Like he says, they filled in wetlands already and everything, the water moved closer to our houses. What guarantees do I have that I just spent a lot of money redoing my house? What guarantees are you guys on this board going to give me that I'm not going to have thousands of gallons of water coming in my house? I'm only a mechanic. I don't have their money to fight everything, you know? And it's, it's just getting ridiculous. I can hear the backup alarms of yellow freight.
Yeah.
I moved there. That's my, I, they, they were there long before me. Now I'm going to have, this is going to be even closer to my house. I, and like she said, I'm going to have noise coming in from every direction. I'm going to have, right now it's nice and black, it's dark. I'm going to have lights everywhere. It's just, it's going to totally ruin my whole quality of life living back there. I like where I live. And I don't want to move, but it, it's getting a little ridiculous with just throwing all this stuff right on top of houses. That corner right there is Country Club. There's hundreds of houses there. You know, it's, it's getting ridiculous that they're putting this kind of stuff right next to houses and that's all I have to say.
Tom Lefae?
Tom Lefae?
Tom Lefae, Three Conklin Lane. It doesn't look like anything like it says.
Anyone else? Yes, Fred?
Fred Mertz, Village of Montgomery. And I'm looking at the map. Uh, I see a lot of trees that have to be cleared when you work for the warehouse to go up. So, that takes away some of the, of the water absorption, filter bound towards the wetlands. So, having traveled Neely Town Road, I see on the north end, available property. Did you look at that as, as a potential for your warehouse? You're impacting residents and you're really, really close to your neighbors as far as where you're going to put and increase your truck traffic through there. So, I mean, going across the road is not that hard. It may be a little bit more costly, but in the long run, you're better off with them doing what you're doing right there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Tom?
What do I do with this thing, Fred? Okay. Uh, so, uh, here you go with another warehouse. Uh, I guess the concern I have, uh, an additional concern is of course the traffic. Now, uh, the applicant here, uh, mentioned that they did, uh, traffic studies. Um, you know, we talked about the cumulative traffic studies. He didn't mention Medline. You're going to have an additional of three, three hundred and fifty trucks a day. Now, Medline's saying they're not going through the Village of Montgomery, so they're, they're, they've promised you that everything's coming down Neely Town Road. So, now you're going to have this warehouse. I don't know how many trucks are going to be moving in and out of there. Uh, I know when I travel Neely Town Road, it just so happens that section where the truck stop is, is very, very dangerous with the trucks going in and out of there. The, uh, the trucks come into complete stops on Neely Town Road. Uh, I don't know this for sure, but, you know, their driveway, the entrance into the place, you would think you might want to have a turn lane, things like that. Uh, have, we had discussions with the county. It's a county road, um, for, uh, the county to do a study because really, guys and gals, I'm really sick of everybody accepting the applicant's word on everything. I think that we have to have independent studies be made. Uh, Neely Town Road right now, particularly on that end of Neely Town Road is a mess. So, who's going to take care of that mess? And with the addition of that, Do-It-Best is expanding. Their, their, uh, truckload, remember that? FedEx is expanding their parking lot for their trucks. Where are all these trucks going? How are they going to get in and out of here? We can't just keep opening the door for these warehouses with these huge amount of truck traffic going up and down, uh, Neely Town Road, going into the Village of Montgomery, the whole nine yards here. I, I just see here that somewhere along the line, the taxpayer is going to get screwed with the cost of upgrading these roads, putting in intersections, the whole nine yards. Why aren't the applicants not being held responsible for stuff like that?
Anyone else, Cherie?
Hi.
Hi, greeting. Just a really quick question for the applicant. Uh, can you describe, I'm sorry, I haven't had time to review your documentation at all, but is it possible that you could describe where the truck base is and from your other picture, your ideal traffic movement? So, we can understand how the trucks are going in and out, where the unload and load is going to occur? At what part is going to be your burden to the area for noise and other activity?
The, uh, the truck docks, we intentionally put them on the backside of the building away from the lower area, but they're on the north side of the building up through here. And then the actual circulation through the, through the site, and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe it's going to be in this direction. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's the other direction.
The other direction?
Counter-clock.
So, it's going to be counterclockwise coming in? And then all the backing up, et cetera, into the loading docks will be done in the backside of the building, uh, away from anything. There will be truck parking along here and over here, but that'll be mostly for storage. So, they'll come out, they'll park it, they'll leave it until it's needed to, to ship out again. And then, uh, this will be truck parking over here also. Employee parking here for the most part, and then some minor employee parking there. But the, the truck loading facilities will be back on the backside.
I just have a concern in what has been described. And one concern, um, uh, for knowledge at this point is they're having, um, a truck storage sitting there long-term. I thought we kind of tried to avoid storing things in trucks here in the town. I thought there was some kind of rule on that, a long-term leaving trucks, um, in parking areas for storage. And what he's saying, it appears that they're going to be sitting there loaded, just waiting for them to be holed away. If I understood that correctly, I thought we weren't really allowed that, um, in our, our will. I could be misquoting, but I also found that having, uh, storage containers sitting there, residents have to even, as it is right now with no true protection, I think that's slightly offensive, not just the noise and the pressure. And I also, as you know, have spoke plenty of times on accumulative impact, uh, the trucking, um, and all the rest. And I think with a comprehensive plan, that we really need to take a post look on what we're doing here. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Nina?
Nina Snyder. Just a very quick question. I'm just listening to things and I'm wondering, you talk about the cumulative traffic study, but I'm wondering if there's been any cumulative air quality studies of the Neely Town corridor um, due to the volume of, um, trucking at this point already in that area? So, I didn't know if the applicant has done that kind of a study as part of their, um, proposal. Just curious.
Anyone else? Yes?
I'd like just to ask you. So, you said that the operation's from eight to four. Is the gates closed after that or the trucks still come in all night long, ready for the next day?
No, they, they operate from eight to four and that's when they'd be coming in.
And so overnight, they don't, they don't come? And so overnight, they don't, they don't come in all night long?
No.
Nothing like that? So is there notes being taken against this?
Yes.
But he said a second, there may be a second shift or...
Periodically, when it's, uh, busy season, you know, Christmas, et cetera.
So you guys are locking it off at a certain time?
It's, it's, it's fenced.
This is what I see even like yellow freight. They come in all hours of the night, backing up, beep, 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 you know, the air brake. And that's, you know, I don't know how far your property line is to mine, but you said maybe a hundred and eighty feet. Well, that's maybe five hundred feet, and I hear them.
That's maybe five hundred feet what?
From yellow freight, it's where I am, is quite a distance.
The nearest, the nearest house to any parking space is over five hundred feet. What we're talking about a hundred and eighty feet is what the vegetation will be left untouched. And then there'll be, uh, stormwater management ponds, and then there'll be the parking beyond that.
Which is the yellow line?
The yellow lines, yes, and we will have landscaping.
Yellow freight?
Yep.
And all those green pine trees, I can hear it clear as day. All those pine trees where you are, much closer. That's why I'm asking. Do you come in all night?
No.
Our, our hours of operation expected are what they are, eight to four. We, we don't plan on operating this at night. We're familiar with the YRC model. Part of our company is a trucking company, just like YRC, and we operate that operation down in Newburgh. We're open twenty-four seven. You know what that is, you know how noisy this is. This is, this is a warehouse facility, it's, it's completely different for us.
It's not a cross dock, correct?
It's not a cross dock, it is just a commercial warehouse.
Not in one side, not the other. I'll load onto one side.
Oh, your name?
Jeremy Petzel.
Jeremy.
It's five Conklin.
Anyone else? Yes, Cory?
Yeah, Cory Sahag, the Town of Montgomery. I just had a, just a quick question, cause it's the first time here, I'm just curious, how many loading bay doors do we have? How many parking spots for trucks over there? How many parking spots will be there for employees? I'm sure that must be the documentation. I'm just curious, I haven't read any of that. Curious if you can sneak out.
Are you able to bring up the display again there?
Sure.
Please.
Huh? Brother?
That's not the same display as what I had.
I have your narrative here, Dave, if you want.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. There are ninety...
Ninety?
Loading docks, um... There are ninety-three bays across the back. Yep, that's right. So there's ninety-three bays across the back, that doesn't mean we're gonna use all ninety. But that's what's in the application. There are seventy-five employee visitor parking spaces, um, down in here. Then there's a hundred and fifty-eight trailers and vehicles, um, along this side, and in here, and over along in here. Yeah, so, a hundred and fifty-eight, uh, trailer and vehicles. Trail, there's, um, just trailer parking over here, and here, that's the smaller spaces, you'll see. And then, uh, I'm sorry, tractor parking. And then trailer parking is the rest of the, um, of the parking spaces that you see there.
Okay, that's okay. Okay.
Just one little question, Fred?
Sure, Tom.
Do you mind? They mentioned that it was Dewey pile, uh, pile trucking coming in here?
A Dewey pile, yeah.
A Dewey pile?
Yeah.
Okay, so, are they, are they Dewey pile gonna lease this property, or are they gonna own it eventually? How's that being worked out?
We intend to own it.
Excuse me?
We intend to own it.
The applicant?
Yes.
No, the applicant.
The applicant.
They Dewey pile gonna own it?
They're, they're gonna buy.
Oh, you're gonna buy? We're gonna buy it. Okay.
Board, any comments? Yes, John?
Number of employees at startup, do we...
Well, I don't, I don't wanna misquote that number, David.
Well, we had seventy-five in the...
Yeah, seventy-five.
Yep, that's what we anticipate.
And no manufacturing?
And if I could qualify that, we, we haven't sold the first customer on this space yet.
Understood.
We're not gonna start at seventy-five, we're gonna build to that.
Okay.
I, I don't know how many, you know, we, we did a similar development recently down in Pennsylvania. We started selling a hundred thousand square feet, that quickly, as sales grew, it grew to two hundred thousand square feet and three hundred thousand square feet, very close to this, which is how we modeled some of our traffic studies and, and employee, you know, when we opened that facility in Pennsylvania, you know, we're looking at probably fifty employees because we've sold the space. That's probably where we're gonna land, what's gonna ramp up is those customers in.
And, and where is that, in Pennsylvania?
Greencastle, Pennsylvania.
The union employees?
I, I don't know who they are, I'm not, I'm not involved.
Are you a Dewey pile?
I'm not, I am, but I'm not involved in the union. We are a non-union company.
That's something you like to know, wasn't you, Fred? So, those are the wages?
No, uh, no manufacturing?
No, sir.
Yes, those?
Where in the town of Newburgh is A Dewey pile located?
One thousand corporate delivery.
That's right off the seventeen K?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it's, yeah, this is going to be totally different than the Newburgh site?
Yes. Yeah, that Newburgh site is an LTL trucking operation, very similar to YRC, FedEx freight, and this is, this is a commercial warehouse, it's a, it's big box.
And that's going to stay there?
Yes, stay there.
Okay. Just...
Yeah, when we're investing in Newburgh right now, we're looking, we're working on expanding that building in Newburgh, we're building a new fleet maintenance shop. We're not doing any fleet maintenance here in Newburgh, in, in Montgomery, excuse me, that's all staying in Newburgh.
Okay, and just a statement, um, I travel Neely Town quite often, and just as a point of reference for you, there are times when their tractor trailers parked alongside of your property from, uh, truck stops all the way to the entrance to travel authority. It gets very difficult, especially when they're parked halfway in the road, tractor trailers coming at you, and all I have is my Acadia. So just, you know, how are you planning on keeping that truck traffic from parking in front of your facility?
We schedule all of our deliveries and pickups, and if the long driveway helps, we can get some of that traffic off the road, they can wait at our gate to get in there.
She's actually in control of this.
Other, other carriers.
We tend to control.
I can't, I can't control, I can't control anybody else. I, I can control our own trucks that we own, if we have outside carriers coming or delivering to our facility, we can control that. I, I can't control the thousands of other carriers that, that may come to your town. Wish I could help you with that, I just can't.
Where are your trucks gonna go if they're sitting there?
If my truck is going to that...
If your truck is trying to get in and those trucks are blocking it, what are you gonna do with your trucks?
Well, I guess I'm gonna call the police if we can't get down the public road.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Ryan?
Just wanna confirm that this is gonna be a single user warehouse, we're not subletting space or anything like that?
That is correct.
That's it.
Anyone else?
You need a water storage tank to supply sprinklers in the event?
I, I, I...
No.
We don't believe so at this time.
There's plenty of pressure, we did a Heimann study down at the Penske property, and ran that through Mike, um, Ayello at the town. And, uh, you know, we've got plenty of prop, uh, pressure to get it up to the, to the building itself. As stated earlier, we might have to have a fire pump within the building to pressurize the sprinkler system. We haven't done that full-blown study, uh, that'll be part of the building design.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Fred, we looked at this, uh, back in March, equal March, uh, twenty eighteen, of course, different views are different applicant. A lot of this has changed, I do owe you a, uh, a comment, uh, letter on this.
Okay. We have a comment letter from Andrew. Got that on its way. Actually, the mic's from back there. And we also have Mayor Fire Chief, Mr. Kelly and Karen Aaron. We do need to investigate the water ponding up on that corner. We have the comments from the public this evening to look at, how are our mailings?
The mailings are perfect, in fact, there were three properties not within the five hundred feet that you noticed. We don't have to do the publication and posting, so we're good on all of them. And the bill at your Mayor clerk, we see what this is.
Okay, good. Good.
Fred?
Yes.
Thanks.
When you, when you're done, just a quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can I ask where the gates are gonna be placed on this? I'm sorry, just it helps us all, board.
The gates are right here at the top of the hill. Uh, this is a six percent grade, it comes up here and levels out, and then comes back down in, and that's where the gates will be, uh, for access.
Okay, so I guess the question is, is when you have trucks and the hours of operation that you're proposing, how are you gonna control those trucks? Are you going to have them come in? And it's only kind of broached in the sense because of what we spoke of, what's going on by, uh, uh, board member Penny says, the trucks and the issues. With your trucks, how do you schedule them, um, for, just in information, and how you can control them? Are they going to be allowed onto the property and await at the gate to keep them off the road? Just how does the logistics of, of what you're going to do, your trucks gonna work with a gated facility and knowing some of the pressure that's going on?
Our intention is not to let outside carriers back up at our gate, because it clogs our trucks from getting in. Those gates are activated by commu boosters we have in our trucks, which are very similar to an EZ Pass. If our truck that we own approaches that gate, it means no outside carriers will be told, they need to wait at the truck stop or somewhere else, or we have an outside drop-in.
Okay, but your...
One type of property, parking room.
But your operations are from eight to four, so these trucks will have access even in pre-hours? Twenty-four seven then?
No.
No, so, if they're A Dewey piles trucks, and they're allotted the pass key to access the main site, is that shut off until eight o'clock? In other words, can they enter in before eight o'clock comes to the facility? You just said they're enabled now. I, I just, um, as a board woman, uh, Penning's mentioned, I'm not saying the problem of those trucks are your problem. Obviously, they're a town's problem that's been built, and part of the issue, what we need to address is the town. My question is, is with your trucks coming in off the road, and your hours of operation being limited to eight to four, those that come in before eight o'clock, are they going to reside and wait? And if I'm right, your answer was, they have a pass code that allows our trucks access to, on the property. So at what point are trucks not gonna ever enter the property, or they're gonna wait outside the gate? Because then your hours of operation then are not limited to the eight or four, if I'm proceeding it right, it's when they can push that pass code and then bring the truck on, and await for a full facilitation of whatever job has to be done, load and unload. So when is the trucks coming in, and what are those controls?
They're, they're generally coming in from eight to four. If they come in before eight or after four, there's no way they're built for them to load and unload. Yeah, technically, we have to secure our property.
Could you, could you speak up a little please?
I'm sorry, yeah. The general operating hours are eight to four. Our trucks have the ability through technology in their truck to open and close that gate if they need to. There's no reason to be there, because there's nobody there from eight to four to load or unload them. You know, it's just not, it's not in our interest, our drivers are on the clock, they're paid hourly, and we, we don't just want them sitting there doing nothing, waiting for somebody to load or unload them.
Okay. So they'll come in to be loaded or unloaded then?
Correct.
All right, from eight to four?
Yeah.
Okay. All right?
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
Just one more thing, Fred. You said about the sprinkler system? Where's the, where's the water gonna go whenever they discharge? Is there some, you know, the drain system within the building, and that, where's that directed to?
Well, that'd be part of the building design, but, um... I don't know, I, I'd have to ask the architect on that, I guess.
If there was a fire?
If there was a fire, it would discharge in the building, but it would be cleaned up in the building.
Periodically, you're gonna have to test them as well, right?
Right, but that's a controlled test.
Yeah, yeah, for fire codes and stuff like that, so, I mean, I'm just curious where the water's gonna go, since there, you have wetlands that are already impacting people's property.
It won't be discharged from wetlands, you can't do that, because it's a pollinator, water.
And anyone else? Your members?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, this is very, very quick, but it struck me when I was looking at the aerial that XPO Logistics is immediately adjacent. And I, I am certain that you guys are not like this, but I just wanted to make a note that if you ever pull the DEC spill report for the town of Montgomery, XPO Logistics has got the majority of spills on that report. They have frequent, frequent spills. And I'm just bringing that up as, as a, as a point for, for what the surrounding conditions are with the site. They're all called into the state, so theoretically, they're all being addressed appropriately, but, but it's just, it's just an example of, of the type of other trucking operations that are in the area that, um, may have an impact on this facility as well.
Okay.
Lots of spills, I can't even describe to you, it's fascinating.
Anything else, boards or consultants, any other comments or questions, yes, fine?
I'm new to this process, um, so I just have a question about the actual, again, the use of the warehouse. So you've indicated it's a single-use warehouse, um, so there'll be an individual, and you'll be distributing the products of that individual user?
Right.
We'll be the individual user, we may have multiple customers in that warehouse.
So do you know what will be stored in terms of product? Will it be refrigerated, is there food, is it flammable, hazardous? Do you know what would be stored in general, and what the interior shell design would be?
Today, no, I don't. And, and I'm not being evasive, but I mentioned earlier that we have a sales process that we need to go. If this project gets approved, they agree to sell it to us, and we own it. You know, we, we have a plethora of customers, we handle bottled water, we handle salt, we do de-icers, paints, you know, there's, there's a whole gamut of commercial and industrial products that could be stored in this warehouse, depending on how that sales process goes. We'll drive some of the architecture if we need hazardous, or we need foam sprinkler systems, or it's, it's very early in the process yet.
And, and you said this is different from an LTL service?
Correct.
And then how, how is it different from LTL?
Well, an LTL service is a cross-dock operation. Locally, we have trucks in this area that, um, go to customers every morning and deliver the freight that came here overnight from Buffalo, or Cleveland, or Texas, or, um, and then that process, after they make all those deliveries in the morning, those same trucks today in an LTL operation, after they've made their deliveries, they go to your commercial industrial manufacturers in this, um, hub of the northeast and makes their pickups. And we may go to a customer and pick up some product that goes to Texas, or goes to Boston, or goes to Cleveland, or Buffalo. That truck then returns to the LTL dock that we have in Newburgh. That trailer gets stripped, it goes on to several other trucks that are going to those various destinations that I just talked about. And that cycle repeats itself any, every twenty-four hours. A facility such as this, most typically, a truckload of pallets of bottled water, or paint products, or, you know, think of all the industrial papers and napkins or things that you can buy at a Home Depot or Lowe's, and I'm just using that as an example. One of those people we do business with, and other we don't. But that stuff typically comes into a facility like this in a, in a truckload quantity, gets stored, and then it sits there until it needs to, um, get distributed to a, you know, I'm, I'm gonna use Sherwood. I'm, I'm going to use Sherwin-Williams as an example just because they may, they bring a truckload or half a truckload of paint in here, they get stored and tomorrow, after it's in here for a day or two, it goes out to your local Ace Hardwares or I think somebody earlier mentioned Do-It-Best or one of those type of stores, and that's how we stock shels.
I just, I think it's useful.
Understood, sure. Yeah, someone mentioned earlier, and I, and I can't recall who it was, somebody mentioned YRC and backup papers or yard jockeys or something like that. We have them in Newburgh, this is a warehouse. We don't put yard jockeys at our, at our warehouse facilities as a, as a typical statement. And, you know, we don't foresee that happening.
Truck picks up the trailer and takes the trailer?
Yeah, these are, these are trucks and trailers and, you know, we're not moving them around, we're not storing in the yard. Dave uses the word storage, I use the word staging. The truck may come in there and sit there for a couple hours, waiting for a door to open, he goes back to the back door, it gets unloaded and he leaves.
Okay.
Is there an occasion that a truck might show up a day early, can't have room in the warehouse till tomorrow, it may sit there for a day and be staged to be brought in tomorrow. But as a, as a general statement, we don't store product or containers in, in the yard, we just let it sit there.
Okay. So there's no long-term storage of anything, except maybe an empty trailer for a couple of days in the yard then?
Just, just doesn't make any sense for us because if it's sitting in the yard in a trailer, we're not getting paid.
It's not making you any money.
We get paid to store for eight and wear.
Okay, all right.
One more comment, Fred?
Yes, Don.
Thank you. I would, I'm going to suggest that, Fred, that you keep this public hearing open simply because of some of the questions that the applicant has not been able to answer, Mr. Petzl's concerns with the wetlands, so I really believe that this should be left open.
Board, there are a number of concerns that we have, a number of things, people we need to hear from. You'll have Andrew's comment letter to address. It may be premature to move this to the next meeting as it's a short two weeks away. Maybe if we had three weeks, it'd be more practical. I'm going to suggest that we reconvene this hearing on February tenth at Monday, February tenth at seven thirty. Does that sound reasonable to everyone, Board?
Do you have anything else at seven thirty?
Not, we don't have anything yet scheduled for, for the tenth. So February tenth at seven thirty, we will reconvene this hearing. So this will be everyone's notice and we'll get another notice in the mail. In the meantime, hopefully, I can get out to your place, Blaine, you can show me all of that. It may not be this week, but soon, we have a little more daylight in the evenings now. We'll look at all of that, maybe Rose can go with me. And hear from the Fire Chief, Mr. Kelly, Karen with the landscaping, and we'll get to those comments as soon as we get them, okay? And then, of course, Andrew's comments are forthcoming and you'll get them to address, all right? A motion to adjourn this till the tenth, reconvene it on the tenth of February, seventh of February by Rose, second it by John, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, next this evening is Brackett Road Properties LLC, Brackett Twenty warehouses. Brackett Road, Minutes Drive, SU Comets Site Plan to our subdivision, this is a continuation of a public hearing.
Bottom of this play, Dave? If you would, please. Well, actually, that's, that's the Google Earth, so if you just pull up Google Earth. There is a plan, it's called Display, yeah, right there. Right.
Okay, any updates for us, please?
Yes, sorry. We did receive a landscaping review from Karen Aaron, and we've been working through that. Unfortunately, we have a fluid bug going on through our office right now. But we should have that momentarily. We did, by chance, happen to get ahold of the Fire Chief.
Yeah, he called me.
Okay.
Yeah, you can brief us on what?
Okay, well, he did have a concern over the third side, or the fourth side, I should say, closest to the wetlands. On both sides, on the east side, we have the DEC wetlands with that hundred-foot buffer around it. So there is a hundred-foot area in there that you could drag hose, et cetera, whatever you need to do. By New York State Code, you have to have a hundred-and-fifty-foot pool from each side. But it can be extended if there are other circumstances, such as an interior sprinkler system and/or terrain restraints, specifically wetlands or hillsides or whatever. That's why we were hoping to get something from the Fire Chief. Say that as long as we have the sprinkler system on the interior, that he would be okay with our layout. I haven't received anything in writing from him yet. He did ask for a building sprinkler connection on both sides, a Siamese connection point. So he didn't want one on the north side of the building as well as on the south side of the building. We told him that we would do that in both locations.
You mentioned to me about a hard path to walk around the building, so you could-
Right. And that's, that's something we could certainly address. We can't go into the hundred-foot adjacent area and touch that at all, but we certainly can put it up, right up to it.
Yeah.
And that would just be a stone surface or whatever.
Yeah, something that they can traverse.
Yep. We could even take a look at a grid-type system with a lot of grass grow through it, but we would have to just delineate it somehow to let the Fire Department know where it's located.
Yeah.
On the other side, we have a similar situation on the west side there. I was looking at this and we could, we have a, we have a ramp on that side of the building. We could flip that to the other side so that there is direct access right there. And this, this whole side is only about four hundred feet long in total.
Right.
So if we had, you know, a truck that could pull up here, and that's the reason for this little jog back here, so that there's a hundred-foot circle for the trucks to turn around in that area.
Okay.
If a truck were to park here and have to pull the hose back, we have a hydrant in the back here that they could connect to that and bring it back. And like I said, about four hundred feet, worst case is worse. We could eliminate the treatment system there, put in a hydrodynamic separator and again, provide a hard surface down through there if that hundred-and-fifty foot is what he is actually looking for.
Yeah, I believe he wants a hard surface so they can walk around the buildings.
Okay.
So they can get around for access. And you mentioned the Siamese?
Yep, on both sides.
On both sides?
The north side and the south side.
In an ox box, I believe, which I think is-
Well, in this case, there's no fencing.
Okay, so you have access here.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, and if he was a propaski, again, that's a owner issue that certainly could be provided.
Okay, and you've gone over the municipal services here with the town engineer?
Yes, and he's issued a will serve letter. The lighting, soon formally beforehand, but Bill's had a chance to take a look at that. But the only thing that he was looking at was the, the fact that we combined the two drives over here and we had to rearrange the lights over there a little bit, so he wanted to make sure everything was okay over there, and he's approved that. So, so those were the three outstanding items, the Fire Department, the lighting and the landscaping.
The landscaping you're working on?
Landscaping we're working on. There wasn't anything substantial in there that was a showstopper per se. There were some things that we really need some clarification on. She wants the contractor to take out evasive species along the front. Well, contractor's not going to know what those are. I don't know if we have to provide someone there at the site while he's working or how she's looking for us to address that. So it's just things like that that have to be, she was looking for gaps in the larger areas that are to be remaining along the road, could be filled in with trees, and I'm not sure, again, how you do that without having somebody out there while the construction's going on. So if that's what she's looking for, I guess that's what we're going to have to agree to provide.
Okay.
But again, it's not like you absolutely can't do this, it's how are you willing to do it? And that's what we've got to talk to her and figure out.
How she wants to see it.
Right.
Proceed.
And there were a number of the useless tree instead of that tree, you know, that type of thing.
Species-specific she is, yeah.
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 That's not a big deal, but-
Okay.
So we, this applies to New York Town Two, number one numbers?
Yes.
Either a sign at the road?
I'm going to have to find that out.
Okay, perhaps a sign at the road and maybe just a big number on the building too.
What sign does?
Donna in the assessor's office said that's a requirement of nine-one-one, the sign.
Okay, yep.
There's an employee entrance versus the customer entrance, designate that also.
Right.
Because that's always a problem with responding.
Okay, this is a continuation of a public hearing, and if anyone in the audience has any questions or concerns about Brackett Twenty? Yes, Cherie? Or Donnie, whichever one?
I think you can hear me unless you want me to come up to the mic, Cherie Zohakis. Do we know what's going in these warehouses?
We do not, we do not have an understanding for this.
This is spec.
So it's all speculation, and have we confirmed the direction of the trucks, obviously, with the issues? That's been addressed and only to go out on to two oh eight?
Correct.
And not to make a right, and is there going to be signage stating that?
Yes, there is going to be signage at the discharge points from the site. At the intersection of Leonard and Brackett, we're planning on putting a sign up here as well as right at the exit from Lot One B.
And I just have an idea about how many trucks are we talking per building? I know you don't know the user, but on speculation about-
Can you possibly zoom in on that? I apologize, I, I had this before, but there's, how many load? There's nine loading dock spaces over here with additional fourteen spaces parking over here. And then on the other one, we have twenty loading dock spaces and additional fourteen down here. So thirty-four and twenty-nine. Did I say the wrong number?
Thirty-four and, yeah, thirty-four and twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yeah.
Yeah, that's the maximum number of chargers.
Right.
And employee parking or visitor parking is all in the front?
All in the front.
On each building?
Yes.
In hours of operation, any proposal?
We don't have an end-user, but we would anticipate it would be similar to, you know, nine to five or eight to five type of hours.
Not twenty-four seven?
We don't have an end-user.
Are you proposing to have forklifts and such things which you're not having at the aisle? Are you anticipating that?
Forklifts, there'll be forklifts, but there's not, there's not yard jockeys is what they were talking about there. So, no, these are very small facilities, so we're not going to have additional, you know, yard jockeys or any kind of vehicles like that to move the trucks around.
Okay, Don, you have a question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Going back to what Cherie said before I asked my question, I'm always concerned when things are built on spec. When we don't have an idea of who the tenant's going to be, what the type of materials that are going to be going into these buildings, what type of level of MSDS is required on these buildings. I, I, I just have real problems with that because you really have no answers to that. The other thing, you know, with the Skabitski and now this warehouse, Brackett Road Properties, Brackett Twenty, we talk about the signage for trucks not taking or going up to seventeen K. But we haven't talked about, and this goes to you guys, about the construction vehicles used in that entrance and exit. What are they, what are we going to do about the construction vehicles? That's it.
Yes, Camina?
Hi, this, it struck me as I was turning onto Brackett Road to come to this meeting off of two oh eight from the direction of where you before is, I don't, are no directions. Yeah, exactly, so as I was coming down that way, I thought to myself, you know, I'm pulling out from Goodwill and I'm making that left-hand turn to get on to two oh eight, and I'm thinking to myself, this intersection is a hot mess. Like currently, that intersection is a hot mess. Actually, like, our superintendent of highways suggested that I go out through the supermarket and turn at the, at the light, right, instead of actually taking-
Shing it up.
Yeah. Brackett, that intersection of two oh eight and Brackett, those trucks are going to be making that left-hand turn on from Brackett, they're going to be coming down Brackett to two oh eight and then making a left-hand turn. And we're talking about four, I missed the numbers.
Thirty.
Thirty-four trucks, like the number of spots here plus the other Brackett Road warehouses. It's just another suggestion for a cumulative impact. Because right now, we're talking about another intersection in the town where the residents and the current businesses are not going to be able to conduct their lives and their businesses. These, these trucks, I mean, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that this is the one reason to stop these warehouses or whatever, but what I'm saying is, is like, we have to take a step back and we have to take a look at how each of these developments is going to accumulate. And it's all building right now. And I think, you know, we've all lived here for a number of years and we're seeing it build right now. So just, just another note, as, as a planning board, you, you have the opportunity to request that the town board give you the tools you need to do your jobs. And I'm just suggesting that that might be a tool that would be helpful for you. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Board members, any comments, questions? I think the engineering is all taken care of on this one, Andrew?
Until the point that we get new plans.
Okay, right, and you're going to, we need the hard surfaces around, around the buildings?
Right.
Siamese, two Siameses, and Karen Aaron's landscape comments, I think we want to be tightened up on them a little more. Anybody think anything else? Signage?
Well, nine-one-one or nothing else.
Yeah.
What was that?
Signage for nine-one-one in your defense?
Oh, right, right, we can add that, that's not a problem.
I think we could cover the construction traffic in our approval document.
Is, is that true, we can do that?
I think we can.
Well, certainly the client would agree to that, I mean, that's not, that's not an issue.
Dave, didn't you have the Arco project?
Our company did, yes, but it's sold.
Yeah, no, what I'm getting at is the MAGDEC and the approvals for Arco would not be radically different than what is expected for here.
Right.
Right.
We had some other things in there, and of course, Arco had some things this doesn't have, but for a general framework.
Right.
We continue this to the next meeting, to twenty-seventh, and then we should have our, our answers. Would we get new plans by then?
Absolutely, yeah, I was hoping to have them in this week. But it just, I mean.
I mean, what are we looking at here, we're looking at the art, the landscape art?
Right, and we've got the landscaping in, there's nothing substantial.
Yes, Bonnie?
I'm just looking through the files that Leslie had left here, and one of the items was that earlier on, you indicated you didn't need a new jurisdictional determination because it was still in effect, but it actually expires on February.
No, it's been.
Did you update it?
Yes, and it's been submitted.
Okay, cause I saw two five twenty fifteen.
Right.
Was the original, I didn't see an update in her file.
We sent that over, I can, I can resubmit.
Okay.
I actually need to get your contact information anyway, so.
And did you have, did you send the DDC the validation map, the original one?
Yes.
Okay, cause that one's still in effect, I believe. If you're in the ten-year time period.
Right.
And I think it was.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Updated in twenty thirteen.
Yeah.
Okay. So somewhere you should have an updated determination letter.
Right.
Okay.
The landscaping and the hard surface path around the buildings for the fire department? Is what we're looking at. And maybe indicate where the nine eleven will be posted on the building?
Right.
Okay? Anything else?
These are fun for the, right on Bracken.
That'll be part of the, how we did it for Arco? Yes. Okay, so, I know we have a busy agenda on the twenty-seventh, but I don't think there's that much left on this. So I, I think we can have it wrapped up in two weeks?
Yeah. I only thought, we haven't seen plans since August, I haven't on this.
Okay.
We're gonna get all the plans, so.
Had, had your comments been addressed the last set?
Yeah. I'm looking at them, yeah. There's.
There's a few things from that that haven't been.
Right, twenty, twenty or so, yeah.
All right, so then, there's a little bit more there than just resubmit. Maybe we should go out to February on this one too then?
First of all, in February?
Ten, seven thirty-five. That way we can, should be, we have our workshop also. Commiserate over something. Okay. So we'll, we'll continue this hearing on February tenth, twenty twenty, at seven thirty-five. This will be the public's notice, and that's when we're gonna be talking about this project again. Entertain you, won't get a card notified. A motion to move that till then by Rose, seconded by Rich, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next this evening, we've got Autumn Sky Development Company Inc., North Hurry Lane, SCU permit site plan and two lot subdivision, continuation of the public hearing. How are you, Mike?
Doing well, guys, happy new year to everybody.
Happy new year. If you could get us up to speed?
Yeah, sure. So last we were here, there were a few outstanding comments from one of Mazer's review letters, which I believe we addressed. I think there was also one additional comment from member McGuire regarding culvert crossings, had to take a look at elliptical pipe.
Right.
Which we did. We did receive Mazer's latest comment letter, which indeed did show there was just one outstanding comment, which was member McGuire's elliptical culvert crossings, again, which we did put in for your planning board's review. There are a few minor housekeeping items related to the subdivision plan in terms of preparing it for filing with the county. We also did submit some easement documentation for review by the planning board attorney. Those were the minor outstanding items that we were dealing with at the last meeting. We provided all that information for the board's review, and we're here to go over that stuff, I guess.
Okay, and this is a continuation of a hearing. So thanks for the update. Any, any comment from the public on Autumn Sky?
That Google Earth, how come it doesn't have Dunkin' Donuts on there?
Oh, it says that they go out and shoot. Imagery date was two thousand sixteen.
Eighty-one, so.
Depends on when they shoot it, when they do the aerial.
Yes. Should update it.
Probably not, it's old.
Would be nice to see that there, right? So we have a, any idea?
Found my plans.
Anybody have any comments on Autumn Sky? Hey, board, any comments?
Were you able to spot those new poles that were?
Sir, I, I did not, that just came to my attention probably like within the last.
I, I did, I did. They're not in the, where the driveway is, it's, it's all, it's fifteen twenty D Y.
Would it be helpful if they were on the map?
Yes.
Well, it'll have to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks like they put the poles in the same spot.
Yeah, they were the first few.
Yeah.
And then the last, the one that's on the property line of the home to the north?
Yeah.
The new construction? That's new placement.
Yeah.
And you have a couple of push braces there that'd be helpful if they're noted on the map.
Yeah, we will show that pole, it's not in line with the five lines.
We can update that survey.
Show that.
Can you put the one on the east side of North Hurry on there also? Just to give the open. Cause that was also put up during the process.
Just be sure of east side.
East, no, yeah, yeah.
The coverage on the pipes we're working on, we've got everything else pretty much addressed. The poles will have to be shown.
One of the subdivision's not under the surveyor.
Yeah.
That's all we have.
That's all you've had yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that'll be provided, we're working, I mean, Danny, I know, did the original survey with me, with Engineering Properties, and I've been in touch with Brian Babcock, so there'll be no issues preparing, you know, subdivision map with them.
Yeah. Okay.
It's just more convenient at this point to do the, like, the legwork up front than to meet with them, sign plans and bring them in, it just gets to be a little cumbersome.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that would need to be done prior to signature.
Absolutely.
Karen Aaron's comments on Walt and Carol?
I, I believe so. Her, her comments were pretty detailed, so I followed them as close as I could, and I updated the landscaping plan to reflect them.
Okay, yeah, cause there's twenty comments.
Yeah, she's been very thorough.
Like I said, very detailed. So I updated the plan to reflect that.
And we, we should get her, get her to look at them again.
Including the pipe D C S.
Now, there's the pipes. So, aside from the changes you had made for, with the pipe covering the pipes, and the landscaping that you've addressed, we haven't seen yet, neither has Karen.
Okay.
And to put the poles on the property, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get a list of what we need to, what we'll have to look at.
Sure.
Signature by a surveyor?
Yeah, Bill signed off on the lady, he gave up.
Yeah, Bill signed off on the lady. Karen's looked at the landscaping.
The apartment, just reviewing the plans and they wanna make another comment or two.
Okay. So we don't know what that would be?
We don't. I'll talk to Matt and see if he can get it in.
Yeah. I, so we don't have any way of knowing whether what he wants is gonna change this at all? He had already reviewed this.
We already had his approval on this.
He does?
Yes, and we had approval on this well over a year ago.
That's what I thought. All right, so we're okay with the fire department, it's just the landscaping and those couple of items. Board, consultants, any other comments on Autumn Sky? Yes, Rich?
Might send in a draft common driveway and maintenance agreement, including utilities. It looks like you followed our template, so it seems to be okay. The drainage is submitted, though I think we have a little confusion. I think we'll be looking for the standard MS four. Drainage.
Absolutely.
You called out actually granting the town Montgomery a drainage unit, and I'm wondering, is there an engineering reason for that?
I think municipal drainage from the street.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Taking municipal drainage from the street.
Okay, so there, so there is, so there is a reason for drainage movement to the town?
Yes.
Okay, great. But then we still need the MS four.
Correct.
If there's.
For his facilities.
Yeah.
Correct.
All right, I wasn't aware that we were actually needing the drainage installed. And the MS four can be a condition of approval, that's pretty standard stuff. Have you seen our?
I don't think I have, actually, maybe I have, I can't recall.
Okay.
I probably, was it done on Duncan? Cause we would probably been in the same.
Most anywhere that you're retaining water that we might have to go in and maintain if your client doesn't do it.
Right, understood. So we did, we definitely did do it there then also.
All right, and we have a pretty good template on that as well. And all three of these can be conditions of approval. We don't expect them to all be.
They don't all have to be wrapped up.
But again, we don't have a subdivision, or we do. Is this subdivision?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, if those three agreements can go with the plaque or to negotiate.
Yeah, negotiate it all. File it together.
Rose, you have a comment?
All that garbage that's on the property will be removed?
Uh, it was, it was removed. All, all the mattresses and stuff, things people had dumped, you mean, or is that what it is?
There are tree stumps and mattresses.
The mattress, that's, that was taken.
That was taken care of?
Yeah, taken care of, yeah, the guy come out, take it, yeah.
I told you, did.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Yeah.
Color renderings were submitted.
We got architecture.
Architectural elevations.
This is for the warehouse, or do we have?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what's also, which we modeled after another one, I think, something busy bee, I'm not sure it was busy bee, I forget what it was called, something. Ehi, yes. Which we kinda modeled after that.
Anybody else? Yeah, Bonnie?
So I always ask the board, do you normally attach the elevations to your site plans? Cause I didn't see them in this set.
No, there's, there are.
Are we gonna make references to them?
There'll be reference to what we approved.
Okay, so they'll be part of, so.
Part of the. Part of the approval of the decision.
Um, I saw the digital. Okay, so you'll reference it, they don't have to get attached to the site plan itself?
Well, we'll, we'll keep it. The site plan will stay here at town hall. Joe, Inspector and Building Department, prior issue of building. And Phil, that's incorporated with the plan set.
When I draw the resolution, usually I try to tie it to elevations and renderings, either with the date or the day of the border city. Some to tie it in.
Some to tie a specific plan, yeah, the specific book. Yeah.
It's supposed to be just attaching the building that has all the ones that.
All right, well, they seem to be minor, yes, Bonnie?
Just add one more thing, I know we talked about it at the workshop, but the wells are shown extremely close to the property lines. I think you thought that they're gonna be repurposed or relocated?
So I've put a specific goal in our plans, called it out in both the notes and a label to say that those wells need to be abandoned in accordance with all state requirements prior to the commencement of any other construction.
But the proposed wells, like the, there's a proposed well right near the driveway.
That's actually not a proposed well, that's a well that Leslie asked me to show on the map, is a potential well location per Project Nine Realty map. So that in the future, should a well ever be needed, it's shown referenced on a prior subdivision map.
Okay, and the one for building two is within a few feet of the property line. I think it's supposed to be setback, I don't know if this is a proposed well either.
Can you take a look?
There's plenty of space for it, so.
I mean, we could relocate it. Where's your second? So I get my second system, I can get it up shown. I've got a scan, I'm getting away from there, I've got a storm work base on that side.
What about behind the door?
Storm work against the back door. So do we get the gradient?
Yes, I mean, I think that the health department requires at least fifteen feet from an interior boundary.
It says, I've gotten it approved many, many times. It's actually from the subdivision line, it's supposed to be fifteen.
Yeah, for an exterior boundary like this one.
Exactly. But I've gotten them approved before, I don't know if it's on their list, but I've gotten them approved before with a lot less than that.
I guess as long as there's no use that would be restricted on the adjoining lot, that would probably be the.
Correct, I would agree with that statement.
Are we okay then with the well?
I mean, it's up to Andrew's, I mean, you can come.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's shown on the back lot. Right in that inside corner of the boundary, of the proposed boundary. It's very close to the interior lot line.
I'll call the health department. See if they can run with that.
He says he's got it through them before, I think it probably has something to do with the adjacent lot, if you're gonna put a well right on the property line, it may restrict development on that. But in this case.
In this case, we have a wetland right there.
A wetland at a.
A wetland in a building that doesn't, doesn't get water, right?
Correct.
Right, yeah.
I mean, so we've got just a couple of minor things that, a lot of them are cleanup, some of them are legal, wouldn't be done till the end of the project anyway. I don't think, there isn't anything here that we see that's gonna amend the plan, aside from maybe moving the well or, or showing the poles and the pole across the street. Are we okay with maybe closing the hearing on this? What do you think, close the hearing on this one?
It's been open since.
Yeah, for quite a while. So I'd like to propose a motion to close the hearing on Autumn Sky until we get this wrapped up and a set of plans in, and then we can move forward. Motion by Ryan, seconded by John, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Is, is it possible to request a conditional final today, based on the minor comments?
We don't have a mag deck.
We don't have a mag deck, okay.
Yes, you do. And I gotta talk to Bill.
So we'll be on the, what's our next meeting to attend to?
Well, as soon as we can get everything wrapped up, we can't promise, we don't have to tell, we don't have to tell the public because we don't know when we'll have everything together. So as soon as you can get, now that you know everything that needs to be accomplished, you could.
Well, if I'm understanding correctly, there's nothing I need to do, it's more I need to get the responses from the board on a couple of these issues, I guess Karen, any well issues and stuff like, so once I get that, then I can act on it and, you know.
Get it to us, we'll give it a go over and we'll start the document. Okay, all right. All right, thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike, if you wanna give a letter from the health department just saying, we're good with that, with that well?
Yeah, I can change it.
You know?
That works.
Okay, next this evening is Lorai Brothers on Stone Castle Road, SCU permit and site plan approval, this is an extension request. This was approved July of two thousand eleven. And there's been fourteen six-month extensions. And it expires, well, it has expired, just expired. So the request in another six month?
Yes.
Any discussion on a Lorai on Stone Castle Road? No, from the second, yeah. It'll be the second of June. Yeah, it'll be the second of June. Okay, we got the letter, from June?
The letter, yeah.
We didn't get the letter?
Got it for him, yeah.
All right, um, can we...
Why don't you go out a month, tell them you need the letter, 'cause this is seven years and they don't even have a letter, which we normally ask for.
Hopefully you still got that file. All right, we'll give them thirty-day extension till we get the, the form letter.
Why don't you go out to your, uh, February tenth meeting, rather than thirty days, 'cause then that would, that way it'll coincide with the meeting.
With the meeting, yes. Okay. So a motion to grant a thirty, um, an extension to February tenth, twenty twenty, by John, seconded by Jay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Okay, approval of the January twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen planning board meeting minutes? And that whole pile of minutes that get through here, thank you, Sue and Judy for getting all these done. Anybody have anything substantive on the minutes for January twenty-eighth?
Nothing substantive.
All right, um, motion?
Those questions, two days, I was, couple of questions you had. Okay, Rich, two, two, ten, eleven, twenty.
Um, okay, entertain a motion to approve the January twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen planning board meeting minutes. Motion by Jay, seconded by Ryan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of the twenty, uh, February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen planning board meeting minutes. Anybody have anything substantive? Just a couple little cleanups, clarifications. Okay, uh, motion to approve February twenty-fifth planning board meeting minutes by Rose, seconded by Ryan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approval of the July twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen planning board meeting minutes?
I'm trying to remember the sentence on my page.
The one in highlights. I think I remember that. Thank you. Um, motion to approve July twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen planning board meeting minutes. Motion by John, seconded by Rose, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're getting there. Approval of the September ninth, two thousand nineteen planning board meeting minutes?
Ryan did again, he corrected that, one of those sentences.
Nothing substantive.
That was a good call. I remember that too.
Your rich ass.
And we had your other corrections?
Yeah, mine were just typos or spelt nothing substantive.
Okay. Um, motion to, uh, approve the September ninth, two thousand nineteen planning board meeting minutes by Jay, seconded by Ryan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and approval of the October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen planning board meeting minutes?
Just Rich.
Okay. Looking to extraordinary, okay. Um, motion to approve October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen planning board meetings by Rose, seconded by Rich, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion to adjourn by Ryan, thank you, seconded by Rose, all those in